Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is 6:05 PM on September 27th, 2023. Role call.
Mayor Josh Allen.
Here.
Janet Charlton. Jason Daley.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Carson.
Mike is asking me to excuse. He had another commitment.
Michael Ferguson.
Present remotely.
And that's everyone. Thank you. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the midst of war with liberty and justice for all. Mayor's report. Everyone has noticed the street work. RCO and the Fox Hill are complete. We're discussing some of the missed potholes with the state agency. We can have them at some point in the future come back and take care of that work. Gordon Park, the RCO maintenance grant was submitted. The notification to award ease is at the end of October. State financial audit, this is a big deal. It was completed. There were no findings, which is all gold stars, which is a big, big deal. So congratulations to the office staff, Lisa, for organizing that and getting that done. You know, these are, these are what we want to see. A lot of cities would be envious to have this kind of result after the end of an audit.
Considering the bad ones we've had in the past, that's awesome.
The city has had repeatedly good audit for many years now, both financial and administrative. Should give everyone confidence in, in the work that's being done here. Water. I had a meeting last week with Commissioner Brummer, Public Works Director Josh Metcalf, City Manager Ryan, the new city manager, excuse me, County Manager. I don't know Ryan's last name. I don't remember.
Ryan Barrett.
Barrett. And so a discussion with these three gentlemen. They are in agreement that they'd like to see a two-year extension to our water receivership document that was to expire at the end of this year. So that's good news there. They're going to have their staff put the initial agreement together and of course we'll get to review it as well as our attorney. So that should be coming soon. That'll give everyone plenty of time for any transition that's decided to be done. Along with that same conversation came number five on the mayor's report. I brought up the sewer non-payment issues where the county does not shut off the water for non-payment of sewer and folks seem to feel like it's okay just to not pay their sewer bills. Remember, the county determination on that stance was from several years ago. This is back, we had different commissioners, different managers, different everybody. And all of these gentlemen were very surprised that the county refused to work with the city on that several years ago. And in fact, the county runs other water systems as well. And the water system is separate from the sewer system similar to ours and they shut off water for non-payment of sewer on those systems already. And so they were very surprised and they are supportive in the county changing its policy on that. And so they're going back up to also talk to their people. And so we're hopeful to have that position changed here in the not too distant future. Thank you, Bob, for letting me know that. Let me turn the video off here. That might save some bandwidth. And so they're hopeful, they're also working on that. They're going to pull up the agreements, the contracts they have with those other water systems and see what verbiage isn't there. And maybe we can create an interlocal agreement between the city and the county and they can start shutting off water for unpayment of sewer for us, which I know is one of the city's biggest loss issues with the current, with the current arrangement. That's big news.
That is.
Thank you for having those conversations.
Yeah, you're welcome. I'm glad. And you know, and I know those gentlemen here and that now, but you know, thanks to our county leadership for being receptive to those ideas and wanting to work with the city on this. Waste Water Outfall Project, it's unknown at this time, but there could be a possible one-year delay in construction from this coming August to August of 2025. And we're not sure yet. We're talking with the funding pack, about the funding package with ecology. And our engineers are able to make the timeline, but ecology is, there's many steps to getting the different parts of the program approved. So we're in the planning stages now. And then that document will take a while to get approved. Then there'll be a design that'll take a while to get approved. And then there'll be construction funding and that'll take a while. And so all of those awiles kind of add up just to more time. And so there is no urgency to get this project done this year, this coming summer versus next summer. But like everything, it's always nice to have it in the past. So we're gonna, we're gonna try to push on, try to get it done sooner than later, but that's just on the, that's a possibility right now. The construction, because it's in the water, it can only take place in August every summer, which, so if you miss the August date, you're, you're automatically pushed back a year. Training, our reminder to look at officials, the online trainings, this reduces our insurance costs. I know I just got a pop-up reminder the other day saying I had three days left, so.
I got that same one.
Oh, good. So it works. And so.
Did I get like a link to my email? Okay. Trying to get that. I was appreciative that I got a reminder because I thought I had mine done, but I still had half of one to do.
Oh, great. It's always good to hear when systems work. That's it for now. Council reports? Agenda approval? I don't have any changes to the agenda at this time. You have a motion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting. Agenda. Agenda, thank you for the September 27th, 2027.
Motion by Mr. Daley to approve the agenda as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded. I think Mr. Hall won. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for September 13th, 2023.
The motion by Mr. Daley to approve the minutes as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for September 2023 for $21,517.70 and the total for September 2023 is $69,564.54.
Motion from Mr. Daley to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Ferguson. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Special reports. Parks Board. I keep everyone awake. Move, move, move.
All right. Hello. So we had a meeting, I think that was last week. And a few things we're talking about, we're gonna go ahead and move, move forward with setting up for our Christmas tree lighting and holiday bazaar. The date is set for Saturday, December 2nd. So we're looking for volunteers, we're looking for vendors, and we're looking for any donations in, whether it be the Christmas tree, any ornaments decorating, anything like that. Then I'm putting together forms and stuff which will hopefully be together this weekend and going out certain next week. Fingers crossed. LPN grant, as the mayor said, we submitted in the RCO LPN grant, which is the local parks maintenance grant. We requested $73,134 to do, and our proposal was that it would cover the cost of doing the group repairs for the concrete bathroom because it's leaking, doing other interior and exterior ceiling, painting, timed door, timed locking door handles, getting those replaced. The old pavilion, do roof repair on that, interpretive sign replacement, the kiosks under that, the original pavilion, along with plexiglass covers, six picnic tables, one of which would be ADA. And it would also cover the cost of any like roofing permit fees. And we also have asked for a utility dump trailer and a new writing one over. So any questions about the LPN grant?
I had a question. Was, was the, I know we've talked about this before somewhere, about the picnic tables. Where were those going?
Those were replaced the tables under the original pavilion by the bathrooms.
Oh, that's what it was. Because I had asked about, are we gonna put any down?
The ones that are still in good shape, we're talking about moving down to McMurphy Park since a lot, we lost a lot of those. So some of them are still in good enough shape for us to be able to repurpose them. Some, I think one of them, it's just one season away from not being usable anymore.
So some will go down to McMurphy Park? Yeah, okay.
And then, it's like questions that RCO asked were due today. I don't think we received, we didn't receive any. The scoring from their staff will start tomorrow and then a final award should start November 1st. And let's see, we also have an Eagle Skelp project at McMurphy Park that'll be happening Saturday, September 30th. So the Saturday, he is proposing to do cleanup around where the McMurphy Park sign is, cleaning up those landscaping grids, putting new chip in. In fact, Ken Johnson is donating a load of bark chip to him for that. Doing some prune up and everything on the trees and shrubs there and also repairing this. And standing down and painting the posts as well. I think that's just about it. Any questions?
Is that a little?
Yes, so he is from our 1-0-2-3-2-4.
Has there been any more talk about putting, getting a light for that flag that's at that park?
Or?
For the flag, on the flagpole?
That he actually, he actually was talking about that being part of his project. But I, I think because of his timeline and funds, he probably, that kind of got mixed off. But we can, that's kind of where that ended at the moment. We can make sure that we visit that at our next meeting down.
Just something for respecting the flag.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Yeah, that's flag etiquette, Rob. If you leave it up, it has to be lit.
I know he was originally talking about actually doing some repairs to the pole itself too, but he might still if there's time, but he really only has what he can get done on Saturday. All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yes, thank you.
And committee report, they're here tonight, but they did have a meeting last week as well. They were briefed on two of the difference, the two different subdivision applications that have been submitted for about a dozen homes each, just kind of an initial understanding of the projects. They're going to be seeing those again during some variance requests and some other land use issues. And so actually eventually the council will probably see these as well once the planning committee has a, has a stab at them. So. So the, the issues at hand with, with what they're looking at are, there's some critical areas, namely the creeks. And so there's a special condition in our code that allows them to have slightly smaller lot sizes if they dedicate those properties back to the city. That is considered a variance, however, even though it is allowed. And so there's a process for planning committee and city council need to approve those.
What was the lot size they were trying to do?
6,000. So it's pretty standard for neighborhoods nowadays, so.
I wasn't here, you know, of course before, but I noticed behind the church over here, what was Sisari's old house? The one that's being remodeled, actually the little Assembly of God Church.
The red one?
Yeah. And I noticed that it looks like behind there, which was part of that property, somebody's getting ready to build or put something in. Was that split up at some point here? I mean, through the, I don't know what they call it. What do they call it?
The D Street side or the East Street side?
It's right behind that house?
Yeah.
In that little empty address?
But that was all one piece of property.
Yeah, I used to mow it.
Oh, okay.
I'm not familiar, I don't know exactly where are we at?
Assembly of God Church, and then here's the alley.
B Street.
Oh, 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 oh. Okay, you're over on, you're, you're up on Fifth, on Sixth Street?
Yeah, Six and B.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that lot was, have they completed it? They may have already finished subdividing it though. Might be a little bit of paperwork left on it, but yes. They are subdiv, they are dividing it in half. There's gonna be another house that's gonna be further up B Street. Yep. It's former councilman.
And that's not going through the planning committee?
No, it does not need to go through the planning committee. It's just a standard, single lot subdivision. Subdivision makes it sound like there's a lot of houses. It's a, it's a subdivision of a, of a single lot, so.
Lot line of Joe.
Yeah, there's a couple different things. A short class, there's a whole bunch of names and I don't know which one is the most proper name, but we've gotten a lot of those over the years and they don't, they don't come through. They're all handled administratively. They don't have to come through planning committee or council or anything unless they're, there's some, something else going on with them. Like if they're, say for instance, they want the street to be narrower, like if they wanted to, the city to give up some of its right-of-way, that, that's giving up property. It would have to come to council, things like that.
And it's only for a single home?
Single home.
And do we have, what is the lot size that they can do that?
They have to adhere to the 6,500 or, excuse me, the 7,500 square feet lot size rule.
Is that a two lot or?
That way we went down to six, in the sixes.
Seventy-five. What's question?
Is that two and a half lots, three lots, two lots?
I don't know what.
I don't know.
The lots, what are the lots? Are 20 or 25?
25 by 100, I believe, or 25. Okay, so you're saying 70?
75 square feet.
I'm saying that's the smallest apartment, no, that's the smallest they can build on is 7,500?
You can build on lots that are smaller.
That's what I'm asking.
Create a lot that is, you can't create a new lot less than 700, 7500 square feet unless there is some variance process involved. Lots that are already less than 7,500 square feet that have existed in the city for a long time. You can build on those, absolutely.
Yeah.
You do need to adhere to front, back and side yard setbacks. And so like in the front, it's 20 feet, in the back it's
10.
15 or something like that. And the side is 10 yard, 10. And so regardless of your, your shape, the shape or the size of your lot, you still need to make sure your structures are within those boundaries within your own lot. And if you, if you can't, for some reason, if you can't meet those setback requirements, there are variance processes involved for that. But again, those need to come to, to planning committee. So we, and we've had a couple of setback variances over the last several years. One was for the new house that was constructed at the end of 9th on Main Street. That lot is shaped, I talked about this recently, it's shaped like a diamond. And so to put a, put a square in the middle of it, you're gonna be close on all sides to something. And so they needed like a three-foot variance. And then there was one on Alpine Court where they built a house in the middle of all the existing homes. It was a very small lot. And so they needed a three-foot variance for that. So there's a process for that as well. There's public notification and all this stuff.
Got you. Okay.
What are we talking about? Planning committee?
Planning committee, you're doing the planning committee report.
So anyhow, they talked about that stuff. All right, moving on to city business. Council consider the Handcrafted Merchant, their tent or treat event application. So if you remember, proprietor of the Handcrafted Merchant came here, I'm a meeting or two back, and she had this really neat idea for kind of a Halloween event on the Saturday before Halloween. And there's an application for her, for her event, for council to consider.
Does she have a business license here?
Yes, she does.
One thing that may be on the agenda for the next council meeting. It's possible that this, this event could require or should inquire insurance, just in case someone falls or, or whatever. And we may ask the council if they'd be interested in, in funding that out of our special event fund. Probably be a couple hundred dollars or so, a few hundred dollars at the most, since it is this kind of a, it's put on by a community member, but it's for the people of the city. So she really can't afford that. That's under discussion. You may see that at the next meeting.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the Handcrafted Merchant application for event.
You have a motion by Mr. Daley to approve the event application. Do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Mr. Hall, more discussion? Cruising the document.
It's gonna be noisy.
Noisy Saturday night in downtown Vader?
Caused by children's laughter.
Can't wait. We got a second.
Okay.
I was, I had asked if there was any other discussion and just a lot of reading, not necessarily discussion. Any other discussion? Anyone needs more time? All those in favor of approving the event application, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, item number two. Council consider adopting the 2024 budget calendar. Here we go, budget time. Everyone's favorite time of the year. Lisa, do you like to do this?
And so we had a budget form we put together, Kristen and myself, kind of worked out some dates. On the left-hand side of the calendar, you can see when things need to go to, need to be published for the next hearing. We should start off with the the revenue and property taxes hearing will be on the 25th. And then I believe the next one is the preliminary one. And that will be.
Of what month?
Next month, October. So we're gonna go to a, county is holding a little workshop for the levees and stuff so that we can get more information about the levees before we have to have that hearing. So the hearings for the revenues and property taxes will be on October 25th. And the hearing for the preliminary is set for the 8th. And then after that, we'll do a, a final budget hearing on.
December 6th.
It'll be November 22nd.
There it is, yeah.
And then we'll have another, and we'll adopt the budget after that at the next council meeting. So this is just kind of a, a little guide, a little calendar for you to have so that you know when the, when the hearings are coming up, we have to notice them two weeks ahead of time. So that will be on the agenda that we're noticing it. But we're just kind of flung away right now to give you guys the information. I think I'll have the budget pretty much, the revenues and expenditures done for the mayor to review tomorrow. And then he'll have that to you, I believe, next week to review.
So no special meetings, I don't see. So. I don't have any problems with the schedule.
Me either.
So the 25th is the only time we're discussing as a council, the budget?
No.
No.
We'll have it as a line item.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be discussed pretty much at every council meeting, probably.
So two weeks, the two weeks before.
Yeah, all of them are.
Okay.
So there's two weeks before the actual hearing. We'll notice it in on the agenda to let everybody know that that next council meeting will be the public hearing.
Okay.
So at that time, you can workshop it and talk about it.
There'll be, as each month rolls over, there'll be updated, updated numbers as we get closer to the end of the year. Start dialing it in more and more as we get closer. Final assumptions. You said, do you want a motion on this? Or just as long as everyone's good with it, okay with the calendar?
As long as everyone is good with it, we can adopt it.
I'm motion happy. I can make a motion if you want to. I motioned everything else. I'll make a motion to adopt the 2024 budget calendar.
The motion by Mr. Daley to approve the budget calendar as written. Do we have a second? No second.
It's all right.
Second.
Leave me hanging.
Senator Mr. Hall, further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Janet was just pointing out that we didn't do the vouchers. So that's at least two people that think we didn't do the vouchers.
Someone first, the second.
Please read back the minutes.
We have heard the vouchers.
Really?
Did she vote? There you go.
Time warp, baby.
Wow. I guess, I didn't hear anybody say sixty nine thousand, or you just say after the vouchers.
No, I read it all.
Pick Kelly.
Or pull a fast one by, watch out what you vote for.
Yes.
Any members of the public have any comment tonight?
I have a couple of questions.
Your time. Oh, hold on, Bob, we, someone beat you to the punch.
Okay, thanks.
We're gonna find out the revenue that we were losing by transferring that revenue to the sheriff's department after we're already paying the sheriff's department.
Okay, so the the that was flashing back. So the discussion was the sheriff's department is given revenue from the state.
On behalf of Vader.
On behalf of Vader?
Yes.
I don't, I have never heard that they are at, they're required to provide that to the city at our request. I don't think it works that way. I I didn't, I didn't do any research on it. Mr. Phrase, that doesn't sound.
I, it doesn't sound, but I'm not.
I know you were talking about, I know you were talking, you were, I think that question came from something Mr. Phrase was, I I'm thinking it was. There there is law enforcement, we get a part of our, if we look at our at our budget line by line, and look at the sources of revenue, there are lines in there that talk about um law enforcement. Does that ring a bell? Something from the, there's some lines in there from the state that talk about that. But it's not a huge, a huge part of our budget.
I think he said the last time we were talking about the police, he said, the way it works is when you have a police department, right, that when the money comes down from the state, they give each city. Yes, each one um a certain amount of money for their law enforcement. We don't have a law enforcement here. So I think my question to him was, where does our money go and how much is it? But nobody seemed to know. I mean, I wouldn't expect you to know that.
I'm just kidding what I was told.
Right, yeah, that, yeah, exactly. So I think that was the question that was, how much would we get in that pot that they hand out to eat if we had our own police department? Is that what you're trying to say, Robert? Was that your question?
Exactly.
So.
I didn't know that that went up if we had a police department. I thought we got this certain amount and we had to, if we wanted a police department, had to pay for it with that, like our, with like our budget for the year, like four sixty five or whatever.
I don't know, this was a conversation at council between, we were talking about funding.
Yeah, something about that doesn't, doesn't sound right to me. All right. Yeah, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll before, but I'll, I'll, I'll look into it. Because I know that we get um that we have some money that comes in already, but it's far less than what it would ever cost to run a a a department. So so the thought is if we did have our own department, there could be some funding there. Okay, I'll look into that.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that.
They're making, they're making it sound like they get more tax, tax, you know, funds just because of having a.
Right.
I don't know.
To be a fairly easy question for, say like um peruse um like Toledo's budget, for instance, and see, look at their usually when it comes to um, when I look at other cities' budgets, I'm looking at their expenditure section. I'm not looking at their revenue section. So possibly there is something in there for law enforcement revenue uh from the state that's larger than usual. So I'll take a look at that.
My my second question is, when Mrs. Sorry had her place, we're back in B and Sixth Street, how did we get three homes on a two, on a one lot?
How long ago was that? Was it before the days of law and order?
Well, it wasn't that long ago that Mrs. Sorry's house used to be still the old red, and that was not too many months ago.
You know.
That single lot has three homes on it? How does that happen? And all of their things are right there.
Of course, we're Ann live, Ann lives there.
Yeah, Ann's old place. Yeah, it's only gonna have two homes on it. The existing home plus one new one.
Yeah. Well, there's two existing homes all of a sudden there.
Well, she, they put that in there, I think. I don't know, that, where that little wood behind there that somebody was like, they put that little tiny home in there.
I I. That's further up, that's right, there's the existing home now that they're remodeling, then there's a vacant area after that. This is all as long as you go north on B Street, right? So you see home vacant, vacant space and then, and then the little red home, that's.
Yeah, Mrs. Sorry's old home is red. They remodeled that, and then they stuck another home in behind it, and then they're cutting a new activation for a new, for a new home. So they have three homes on.
I can't speak to the uh the 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 old home that's on the northmost section, but there, the way the property is divided, if you look at the parcel lines, there's just one large parcel there. And so we're not looking at anything else that's happened in the just in the past. We're only looking at the single parcel, it's a, it's a rectangle, and they're gonna split it in half into two squares.
Which is great, because if they, if they improve it, then their property taxes go up, which actually pours more into the pot so that we can have more in our budget for police and stuff like that, correct, Joe?
Yeah, yeah, and um, you know, each house, probably around eight percent or so of that comes to the city, that's my round number that I've kind of figured out over the time. So the property taxes, you know, less than ten percent comes to the city for every house that we get. Most of the city's revenue comes from additional population numbers, so as our population goes up, which you need a house for us to be population to go up. That's where we get most of our extra revenue, it's population. But as far, as far as your question, yeah.
Is, how did they put two houses on about sixty feet? How did that happen?
I think that was before, I, that's not the new people. That's not the ones who's bought it, put that there.
Yeah, I can, all I can tell you.
That was when Ann and her dad or whatever.
Yeah, all I can tell is what, what, what is now. And what is now is that there is, there is roughly a fifteen thousand square foot lot there that has the existing house and had like a shed on the back, Ann had a shed in the back or something. And and they tore that out. And the planners and the engineers and everyone are looking at it to make sure site setbacks exist and everything. The only thing on that particular parcel is, is the one existing home that's right at the corner of Sixth and D. And so, and I know they're gonna put another home, um the manufactured home that they're gonna put in there. So is the manufactured home there already?
No, there's another home that I I keep telling everybody. Uh I've been here since the eighties, and if you don't follow the rules, then all of a sudden, things appear. And I'm saying, how do things appear and we not challenge their appearance?
Well.
It's illegally there in a small, tiny area.
It must be, it must be on the other, on the other parcel then. Because they had surveyed, there's, and there's not a you know, they had a survey come out, they have it, all the structures marked on the survey plot. The engineers looked at it, the planners have looked at it, there's.
But so if there's another home on the property, shouldn't the city know about like a water meter and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to get normal utilities.
Oh, it's permitted. It's permitted, right? Everything's permitted.
The, all of the work being done on the the one parcel, which will soon be two, is permitted, yes.
I'm almost, it sounds like it's a different area from what you're thinking.
I'll take, I'll go take a look at it, but.
I'll be glad to show.
But they had, they had a survey done, and there's not another structure on that pe, that, that piece of property. So it may be on the neighboring property.
It's on with the house, the house that's being remodeled. Okay, so not, not the people who are remodeling the house, but Ann, whatever.
Going north.
They were, they put in uh basically a miniature home right behind that house.
That's kind of an accessory unit, accessory building?
Have garden hose hooked up to it, kind of thing? I I'm serious, I'm serious.
I think that's what the concern is, that we have to really start paying attention to what people are moving into. I mean, it's great that we want more people here, but do.
Yeah.
How do we want more people here? Do we want them living in fifth wheels? Do we want them living in tiny homes on another person's property? Do we want, I mean, so when these people sell this house, because I'm, you know, they're flippers, then they sell the main house that they're remodeling is the person that's, you know, buys the house, are they now gonna own that house and then rent the other house out? Which what shouldn't have been there in the first place because it's not, it's not allowed, you know what I'm saying? They probably been there to just drive by there.
Yeah.
It's only a block away.
Yeah, yeah. Step outside, look down the, down the street and see what you're talking about.
Probably hit it with a rock.
All right, I can't hit my notes. Look into it. Yeah, we we do have rules for the, for that though, and obviously, you know, if you're gonna.
That's all I'm asking, is there any, all of the rules?
Yeah. Uh Bob, you had some comments.
Yeah, about the police to to really to weigh in on how much it's gonna cost, we need a whole thing, where's court system, um officer, vacation. We need somebody to look into that total so they can say, um even if we hook up a Winlock Toledo, um a a cost versus paying that one fifteen that we're being hooked into in the next, what, month or whatever? Thanks.
Yeah, I've, I didn't put it on the agenda for this week, there, or I've I've gotten some new information for council, but um I'm still waiting on a few things. One of those is Toledo, they have not responded to my question. You know, I've heard two different answers from them regarding if their contract would be all inclusive, similar to Lewis County. Um and would include court services and all the, all that stuff as well. You know, over the months, we've been talking with them, I've gotten two different answers from them. Um former, their former mayor, Delos, he had um said absolutely, but their pro tem had seemed hesitant to say that, and he's the one driving the show now. And so I'm kind of waiting for him to hear back, waiting for, to get back from him. But of course, they're gonna have a new mayor here in about two months. So um so there, so there's that unknown. Um just two hours ago, I actually um got information from the sheriff's department regarding some expense, questions regarding um expenses if we did not have a contract with them. You know, one of those was hourly, what the hourly rate would be and things like that. And so um Miss Brean did get ahold of me two hours ago and um couple, just the highlights of this is that um there'd be a three hundred dollar a month service fee regard, anytime there's one or more calls. So there's a three hundred dollar administration fee. They charge a hundred and fifteen dollars per deputy per hour. There'd be a minimum of three hours per deputy for each call. Phone, things that are taken care, taken care of by phone only are a minimum of half hour each. Jails and 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 so on, so on, so on and so forth. So I've heard, so we've got that information now. Obviously, at hundred fifteen dollars a deputy, um that could start adding up really quick if we have multiple folks on site to handle big issues. I've also been talking with the prosecutors department up at Lewis County regarding what a contract with them might cost um for certain services if we were to need it. So there's, there's, there's more information incoming for us, but it's not, it's not compiled in a updated form for you yet, but.
What's the chances of, same comes time where the um the council doesn't wanna, you know, do their own police, or they don't wanna go with Winlock Toledo, whatever the option. Have we tried negotiating with whoever's in charge at the sheriff's department?
We haven't.
The price and the hours?
We haven't yet, and and I'm, I'm expecting as we go through our budget process here, you know.
Hang on a second, Joe, did I, hang on a second, did I not ask Snaza if we could get the same amount of hours for more or, you know, less hours for the same amount of money? When we had that meeting and we're interviewing him, I asked him that, and he said, no, it was impractical. There's no way they could offer that.
All right, I forgot, I forgot about that, so.
There's no way, what?
So a while back, um Mr. Ferguson was at a meeting with the sheriff and he reminded me that he did ask if he could, you know, if we could get it for the same cost. And initially, the response from Mr. Snaza was that, no, they wouldn't be able to. So I would say that would be an informal haggling is what that was. But we could go back to that. Um I was saying that I I expect as we go through this budget process, what we're gonna find is that that cost that's being given to us um very well may be out of reach for us. So the point may be mute if we can't, uh, if we can't afford it.
Yeah.
Um or if we just don't want to afford it because it's every last dollar we have, and we need to start scrapping things like Fourth of July and things like this. So um we're gonna find out here in the next we look at the budget tomorrow, we might find out tomorrow, won't we?
Any word on your, you were talking about, um you were gonna talk to like the lot Toledo and Applevine about a.
Haven't heard from them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
Appreciate all the work and research you do, Joe.
Thank you. I did talk when I had um the commissioner and the new county manager in front of me, I did talk to them about law enforcement and some of the issues. All the smaller cities we're having. And um, you know, one of the huge dreams would be for everyone to get together and have our own kind of South Lewis County law enforcement agency of some kind. And um as luck would have it, the, the county manager, Ryan, his previous job was administering something like that, it already existed and he has experience with it. Both he and the commissioner found that idea very interesting, and they were gonna start asking around about those, those ideas as well. Because law enforcement isn't just a Vader problem or, you know, anyone else's just problem, you know, it's, it affects everybody. And better law enforcement is, is good for us, it's good for the whole region, right? So um they were gonna start, start knocking on some doors about that too.
So what towns don't have it besides us and PLs are?
PLs having a heck of a time as well, you know, they're about the same size of us, as us with, their budget's similar. And so they've had issues maintaining a single officer, it's about what they can afford, you know, so that doesn't get you very far.
Right.
Um Toledo has two officers right now.
I mean, they did not have a police force. What towns of Lewis County, besides us and PL, is that it?
Oh, Randall.
Also, keep in mind, these, some of these cities, these cities that we're familiar with are not.
Not even be a city.
Incorporated, right? Like, for instance, on Alaska is, would be covered by the sheriff's department because they're not a city. Randall, Adna, you know, even as big as, close to Shalas as you think they're, they're not a city.
So beyond Vader, basically.
I don't, I don't, I can't think of another, all the other cities, Mossy Rock has been contracting.
With Morton.
With Morton.
Yeah, okay.
Um because they haven't been able to handle it on their own. So Packwood again, not, as big as they are and as large as they're growing, they don't, they don't have law enforcement agencies. Lewis's sheriff's department. So now you can start seeing why sheriff's department is. Lewis's sheriff's department. So now you can start seeing why sheriff's department is spread so thin when you have these areas that are starting to become more urban and with many more people come many more issues. And they need to, they need to police those with their current head count. Any other public comment? Mr. Notch.
We're having a chamber meeting, chamber forum luncheon on the nineteenth of October. I believe it will be at GC's, but that's not confirmed yet. But the speaker will be Alyssa Hoyt from the Mount St. Helmut Institute to be discussing the new project they got going up at Cold Spring or whatever it's called up there on the mountain. So it's related, but if you guys are interested in all that. So you know they're doing that L cap money right now, all the grants for that. So I hope that should be a pretty good move on, just to increase tourism.
So it was the ninth or the nineteenth?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, that's the third Thursday?
Correct.
Third Thursday, South Louis County Chamber of Commerce meeting.
What time?
I will let you know when.
They're doing it.
I will let you know when to firm up that location.
Thank you. All right. Any other elected official comments before we adjourn?
Well, I'd like to give you an update on the tracks.
Yes.
Tracks.
The tracks, finally we got approval to open. So we will open on Sunday at three o'clock for, for our first day. And we have a limited menu because we're still have to do, we still have to jump through one more of their hoops and do a septic upgrade. But they're gonna allow us to open the bar without using any, without using nothing more but a deep fryer in the kitchen. I can't use the, I can't do anything else because it requires too many dishes, right? So I can't use the dishwasher. So I can use, we'll have a limited menu. We'll have great, great beers and boozes for y'all. So please come down. We'll be open until ten. Three to ten is our hours for right now while we're-
Three to ten.
Mm-hmm. While we are limited. So. Yeah, come down. Should be fun.
All right.
Finally.
Any other, other comments? This time's meeting's adjourned at six fifty-seven PM. Thank you.